Really interesting. Yeah, really interesting how he considered the fold so heavily because people just under bluff and he's born of all the tournaments. It's really, really interesting.
Yeah, I mean, what are his bluffs? You know, like if we really think about it, like sure ace high, like ace high has some show out value in that ace five. And when he raises the turn with maybe some backdoor diamond draw or something like that and actually gets called in on this kind of board, like what, what hands did you have into folding?
Um, and it's gonna have some misdraws and things too. So I think calling is the only option myself. Let's see if Boogaloo uh got away from it. Ooh, call a six.
So this is close between call-
Really interesting. So call a six, raise the seventy-five hundred is ten points. And I'm gonna say he said that because this is a very bad player. And so he thinks the very bad player is gonna stack off here with horse queens a lot. I'm gonna guarantee that's what he's gonna say. Very interesting though. That call for sure was the right answer. I never am in this spot. I don't know. Um, interesting spot too. I, I, I think this is a little bit of a lesson for everyone out there too. A lot of times the hands we want to float with, like this one, are better as, as raises. So this is kinda falls back out of it.
Yeah, and he was kind of an echo chamber for us there saying, you know, we just get better hands to call and worse to fold. Like he's going to have some gut shots in his hand. He's going to have spades, he's going to have king X. And we kind of, I mean, we kind of identify kind of what cards are going to be bad for us on future streams. And we, we're aware how to proceed on those cards.
Absolutely.
So yeah, that's a very good point, man. You're right, you're right, you're right.
That was the best. You didn't say anything. You won. Just straight up, this one, I, I, I just, yeah, I'm just.
Alright, so, ooh, look at this. You're not opening this. He just looked at this. You're not opening this.
My cut off high deck low jack. Under the gun one.
Come on down all the way. I um, so, let's see if he-
He's gotta open it or there wouldn't be a hand.
You, yeah, it wouldn't be a quick-
I'm already down on points.
You're already down on points in real life. Now, obviously, you're gonna cheat, but-
I'm gonna, I'm gonna evolve.
You're gonna, yeah, you're gonna adapt, right?
Ah, let's play.
I am going to cry if he says he's folding here. If he's like, yeah, you should be folding this in this kind of tournament, and you were actually right. Alright, cool.
Wah wah. Ah, yes. I just wanna say for the record, this is the best three-point score I've ever gotten in my life. Because the right answer was fold.
Good, bro.
But you heard what he said. I'm on the tables.
This is a three K.
Here comes the excuses. Ten points fold. It says right here.
The excuses to open? If your table is particularly tight and weak, welcome to the five dollar two K world. I mean, you know, the eleven dollar ten K, I'm opening this. Yeah, for sure.
This is the best three points of my life.
Oh, that's hilarious. And everybody's-
Nailed it. What the hell kind of play is that between kings and queens? Who in the- Who does that?
Who the hell?
Jonathan Little's an absolute crusher, so it's nice to have him. He's just coaching me.
Yeah, I agree. And I always love playing right after sessions like this because I feel like my, my brain's warmed up. I'm thinking through things and, and so it's a good way to start your session for sure.
But, alright guys, this is it.
What's up, you wanna give a gist? He was saying Narco Pau was playing about deep hitting about twenty-eight percent of hands. He had been very aggressive. And this uh ten dollar buy-in, and here are the options to fold, to call, to raise twelve hundred, raise the- What? Wait a minute, he made it eight hundred, and my man's giving options twelve, fourteen hundred. So it's already getting uh kinda spicy.
That's so nasty. To be on the site with these other crushers, you know, well-known poker public figures is pretty exciting, I'm not gonna lie.
Yeah, I didn't mention that when I was kind of giving a little intro here too. You know, Assassinato, Matt Affleck, John Little, uh, all coaches on the site, so very highly respectable. Quality poker content.
Yep, Evan Jarvis as well. You know, remember Evan Jarvis, Matt Affleck, Assassinato, John Little. Uh, so I guess that just makes sense. He just have the ace clubs in his hand. That's interesting though. I thought that was interesting.
I'm pretty glad you didn't do that bad. Forty-five.
I like how you just pat me on the back. You didn't do that bad. Well, yeah, good job, buddy.
The fact-
I remember, I got the higher score in the first one. I got the higher score in the first one, so, you know, we're one for one, buddy.
I just wanna know.
Calling guys. Let's see if we're good. Similar situation. That's pre-flop? I think it's pre. Alright guys, we're checking right now. Oh, fuck.
When you're facing a min raise or just a touch more than a min raise, and there's an anti-inplay, which is gonna be the case in most tournaments, I think, going forward, you want to defend pretty wide. If your opponent's making a two-
Alright, cool. Uh, you going fourteen hundred?
I'm going fourteen hundred, guys.
I'll go call with the armadillo hat. Alright, and I would fold in game though, for the record, in case I was, we're winning it.
Ah, you won. You win. I, 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 I have to concede. You win.
Fourteen K.
Fourteen K, let's do it.
No, no, we can't win. This is a pretty rough spot because-
Damn it.
Mm-hmm. Where you gonna get my chat?
Get my chat.
They like, they like, they like naughty things. They like just beer, alcohol, you know.
Alright, let's do uh, I can do a ten dollar ACR giveaway.
A ten dollar ACR giveaway courtesy of my man Toe. For me beating that ass heads up in this, sorry. We'll do this, we'll do, we'll have to do it at least once a week, man. And then, you know, we'll do it, we'll do it every week a couple times.
So, it's time.
I guess we gotta give out ten bucks to each, each other's communities. We'll just do our own ten, ten dollar free roll for each. Or is that, does that sound fair?
Yes. Do you know what this means?
You win. I give his chat ten bucks. Take it.
So that's cool because we have two ties, and it'll win from you and a win from me. This is like the epic battle. It's perfect. It's great.
Yeah, we're, we're even stevens. Take it.
This is awesome. I love it. Stop. We got a giveaway going. Let's run the giveaway for the ten dollar ACR winner. Closing the giveaway, drawing the winner. My man Sevz are getting the ten dollar ACR giveaway for this one. We're here. What's up, guys? We are here and we're ready to go. How y'all doing? You guys ready to get your learn on? Cyrus says he's here awake and soberish. Caps in the house. What's up? What's up? What's up? What's uh? We made it. What's up, guys? Marlon in the house. I see you. I see you. Uh, Cyrus here as well. Waiting for Sixes here to uh catch up to us. Should be any second. Should be any second. ReadytoPokeCouching.com stuff. Having Traverse City coffee and a smoke, the breakfast of champions. Uh, as you can see, since we've been gone, they uh have added a ton of quizzes. Longest intro in America. What? It's that way on purpose. Give you guys a few minutes to roll in. One thing Sixes and I noticed is that when we do these no delay streams, when we click start, unlike the poker streams, we can start talking because there's a three-minute delay. It gives you guys a chance to roll in, and we're talking to people right when we go. Um, we do the live no delay streams a long time. We send out tweets, we send out Facebook, and then it takes a minute for people to roll in. And uh, so we watch, play the video on purpose to give people a chance to show up and, you know, go grab coffee, use the bathroom, run to the computer if they see the notice, and that sort of thing. So there you go, Beats. I worked hard on that video. Where's the appreciation, man? Right on, right on. Let's try and find Sixes. What's up, Sixes? Where you at? Let's click our little multi-link and get into his chat.
Oh, I'm muted. Sorry about that. How you guys doing this morning?
Oh, I'm muted, he says. We just came into your stream to look for you. See if you make sure everything was okay.
No, I walked away. I went to go turn some more coffee on and uh, yeah, started and I didn't realize it was the end. Good morning. How you guys doing?
Off to starting, uh, starting off well. I was just talking about how many quizzes got added since the last time we did this. It's only a week. There's a, there's a crap load of classes.
I know we should have our next batch coming up here pretty soon, which is pretty exciting. I mean, look at this. Since you've, since our quizzes have been added, uh, what has there been, like, twenty?
Nine, ten, eleven. Eleven.
Eleven. I mean, they're always updating the content, which is nice. And as they get better, we all get better, you know? As we get better, you get better. So that's the biggest takeaway, you know? Just follow this stuff. These guys are crushers.
Yeah, absolutely, man. Absolutely. Uh, ready to party? Wanna kick one of these off right away?
Uh, yeah, sure. Let's do it. I do wanna do one of these cash game ones one time. Maybe at the end of the session, we'll have to get a cash game one in because I've been playing a little bit more cash lately and it's fun.
That was me. I was hearing echo. It was me. Uh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So um, I have not been playing cash game yet because I haven't had the opportunity, but we were talking about it a lot. And I'm gonna dive in, man. I'm gonna dive into a little cash game, see if I can't uh, you know, broaden my horizons because I've always been a tournament player. For me, uh, I, I was just talking about this in the PokerCouch.com Discord by coincidence this morning, like, it always seems to be players tend to really love one way more than the other. You got a handful of hybrids like yourself that likes to play both a lot. But most people, when you talk to them, they love tournaments or they love cash game, and they adamantly hate the opposite, right?
I know, it's weird. And then some of the best guys are obviously well-versed in both. They were just poker players and they see the edges no matter what, you know, and being good at both variants obviously makes you a stronger player overall, you know?
Yeah, because cash games are really good deep stacked, right?
Exactly, yeah. And you can learn how to play deeper, you're more comfortable post-flop in situations like that. So I think there's merit to at least studying and learning cash because it's deep stacked poker and uh, you'll find yourself in situations where tournaments are deep as hell for a long time, you know?
Yeah, and they say that a lot about playing other variants of poker too. Just being well-rounded in general helps you see, you know, I guess figure out odds and see spots and just get better at poker as a whole.
Yeah, and think about like the main event, for instance, right? Like cash game players, like the best in the world, just won't miss that tournament because they get to play deep, like for so much of it, you know? And they feel like they have an edge over tournament players who are used to being more shallow for the most part.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's like the softest ten K of the year.
Right, right.
Much different than like a ten K WPT or some other ten K stop on the road, right?
Right.
Cool. Let's play a quiz.
Let's do one.
Which one do you wanna do? You pick it.
So you thinking we go, do you think it's a better idea to just pick some of the newer stuff? Um, or do we go back a little bit? Um, and let, you know, the people who are gonna check out the site for free, um, take some of the newer content? Or maybe it doesn't matter because there's almost, there's about six hundred of them, so.
Yeah, and I don't know uh what's offered to the free guys versus the premium guys. You know, like I don't know which quizzes they get, if it's the newest ones or some ones they have in the can. I don't know how, how that is.
Yeah. Alright, well, I guess let's just go to the sixteen hundred dollar tournament because it looks very interesting.
Which uh, which number is that?
Uh, you wanna go to sixteen, uh, six oh one, excuse me?
Oh, the top one. Cool.
Yep. Alright, let's, let's do it.
Six small.
Alright, today we're playing day two of the Venetian sixteen hundred dollar tournament. We have ace, ten of spades in the hijack. It's gonna fold to us and we're gonna raise it up to twenty-three hundred. Ace ten of spades is always gonna be a raise there. I don't think there's much need for commentary. The cutoff calls, who's an unknown player, and uh, we pegged kind of on the weaker side. And the big blind who, we don't have a huge sample, but we, he's unknown and he seems a little bit on the spazzy side. Flop comes eight, seven, rainbow. Should we check? Bet twenty-five hundred, bet four thousand, or bet seven thousand?
So I have a little technical difficulties, I'm a little behind.
Yeah, no problem, no problem. So right out the gate, we're getting to a spot that I both, we, it feels like we both would find debatable. Right out the gates, there's gonna be a hand where we probably differ, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Stack size is forty-eight big Cyrus. Hold nuts welcome. And Reno, thank you for the follow. I appreciate you. Um.
Let's give our chat a chance to answer.
Chat, what are you guys gonna do? They're all about fifty bigs deep. The chat says our check, twenty-five hundred, four K, so about half pot, and then seven K. Bomb that mother. Uh, Ginger's saying check.
Yeah, here's our options, guys. Yeah, check, twenty-five hundred, four K or seven K. Famous Five says twenty-five hundred. Okay. You got somebody saying check on their end? On your end? Okay, okay, you gotta check. Hey, good morning Slim Fit. How you doing, buddy? What are you doing in this spot, man? You checking? Here's your options. Check, bet twenty-five hundred, four K or seven K. It's nice to see you guys, you know, so we all can kind of learn from uh either our mistakes or what we're doing well, so it's kinda cool.
Yeah, it's fun. It's fun. Uh, I got Rich here. What's up, buddy? He says he's checking. The dude man is checking. Cyrus says either four K or check, and Reno says four. What are you doing, buddy? You're steven.
Yeah, I'm betting. Um, with the weak player behind, uh, even if unknown spazzy dash check jam, I mean not check jam, but uh, just call, you know, I think there's gonna be a lot of good turns for us. Uh, the weak player is just likely gonna be either calling or giving up. I don't expect him to raise too often, so I'm just gonna see that. That's gonna allow me to check back some turns and see some rivers at my price rather than check calling a massive sized bet here. Some cases, so I don't know. I'm betting twenty-five hundred as well.
Opus checking, Wee's betting twenty-five hundred. Four K too much in his opinion. We bet small or half, not loving a ten. Agreed. Ten's not a great card. It's not a horrible card, but it's definitely not a good card. Um, yeah, you know, I mean, I'm checking. My whole chat's checking, but I think it's funny. But yeah, I'm checking, you know. We're multi-way and uh I wanna guarantee that I'm gonna see a turn and not blow this pot forty bigs deep or fifty bigs deep.
No, I can, I can see, I can see the merit behind that. I just think a lot of, we can make a lot of the range behind us fold. Oops, I'm in. And um having to be able to double barrel in turns, making some weak draws or some weak pairs fold, uh, yeah, I, I just would rather just bet we take it down some percentage of the time as well.
Can we argue that weak pairs probably gonna flow you for one? Because all the weak pairs have like weird backdoor straights and weird things and weird draws are probably gonna flip you if you want to. So you might double barrel, which is why you're betting small. I imagine you're gonna bet the turn a lot?
Well, we also get turns when we do check that we just have to shut down and give up. Like, or just don't have, I mean, and then I, I just-
Or six, maybe.
I just feel like if we have ace ten here and the big blind calls, um, there could be turns, for instance, if the big blind calls overcards, you know, spades, we can just use a lot more cards as double barrels.
Sure, yeah.
Um, and put a lot, a lot of pressure on his seven X under pairs, bottom pair, misdraws, five, six would have to fold a lot of times, so I I think that's gonna be the outcome more so than us being able to check and win the hand multi-way. Win a lot of turn cards.
He would normally go fifty-nine hundred here. So my question, Marlon, is why? Josh has twenty-five hundred. What's up, buddy? Hold nuts has twenty-two point five K. He's on your team.
He just shut it down right away, you know, by doing that. He condensed his ranges and, but at the same time, it's, it just feels like-
We could do that for seven, right?
Continue. Yeah.
We could probably do that for six and a half, I would imagine.
Yeah, I'm just-
Cyrus says Sixes is saying king, queen, or jack. Come on the turn. You're gonna rep that? I would say yes. I would rep it if I were you.
Uh, yeah, I mean, it depends on where the call comes from. But I mean, yeah, but certainly if it's uh, because he's gonna have just live seven X, he's gonna have five, six sometime, he's gonna have ace three. He's gonna have like eight, five that just can't stand the heat of two barrels when we have a lot of overpairing strong hands in our range, right?
That's when you get like sevens and sixes and fives to fold.
Right, right, right.
Weird draws sometimes, like the weak ones.
So yeah, you just put a lot of pressure on a lot of his range and you essentially condense, and it makes our, I guess, our triple barrel range a little bit tighter. Or we need just the top of our range or the top of our, the board just to run out so clean for our range, but I don't know.
Yeah, Rich says weak pairs are calling a third bet, so I guess if we bet, we gotta bet large, but hate being called, have some backdoors in our hand could be good right now. So I think that's why a check is nice. I kind of agree with Rich. And we do have overpairs, Cap, we do. But again, like, I, I can see, I'm not sure if he's gonna see bet here or not. I, I really don't know. Um, with the weak player, he might. Um.
I'm saying this, but I still think Matt's gonna pick check. Because with unknown, because with unknown spazzy, I think he might expect to get, for instance, if unknown weak is in a big blind, you know, I think he's not gonna check raise as all, as much of his range. He probably turned some straight draws into check calls. If you know a player's like this is in big blind. Um, so it really would suck to get just check raised by five, six here and be put in real tough spots. If unknown weeks there, he's probably not gonna take as many check raise lines as he should.
Yeah, he's gonna be passive usually.
Yeah, so he's gonna play more check call and very few, he's only check raising strong linear, like two pair and top pair, good kick type shit.
Nice.
So I mean, I would, I would fall for check.
Yeah, and I would say the guy's betting, like, I don't think betting here is necessarily a hundred percent of mistake. I would say there's certain sizes here that I would, if it was me, I would give like an eight. And I would give checking a ten if this was my quiz. But so I, like I said, there's some merit to betting. I just think the key is if you're betting, there's, you have to know what turn cards you have to turn to a bluff. And so I think that's the, the important is to have the plan, and which ones not to turn into a bluff. Yeah, have a plan down the road, which is the important part.
I mean, for the sake of the quiz, I would say he's gonna check, but I, I mean, in game, I'm betting here uh, probably a lot. Uh, yeah, probably all the time almost, but-
That's funny because I think I'm checking all the time, always. Let's do it, see what happens. My chat said mostly check, let's check.
If there's two passive cats in there, how can you not bet?
Alright, well, if there's two passive cats in there, I might.
Equity, yeah.
But that's not what this is.
Yeah, you're right. It's not. That's why I'm saying check is all, so.
Alright, I'm gonna click check. We'll see what happens.
Alright.
Kind of an interesting spot here on the flop. I think there's multiple options that are viable here. Um, I think betting four thousand is the best option, followed by betting twenty-five hundred and also checking. Uh, remember we're multi-way here, so our big bets are going to be smaller. Uh, on these low boards, so this is an eight-high board, we wanna be betting larger um, because there's a lot of overcards that can call. There's a lot of hands that can continue on this board, so we're gonna be using a larger bet sizing here. Force folds like from like two overs with a backdoor flush draw, looking at our range here. I also think checking is a viable option. Checking here is kinda nice because you let hands like queen ten, king ten, um, those two mostly. And then also hands like ace five suited, ace four suited, ace two suited, ace six. Those are hands that we dominate, that we wanna keep in the pot so we can make dominated top pairs. So there's a lot of value to checking. We have an easy check call with two overs and a flush drop, so. We go in and bet four thousand. Cut off folds, and the unknown spazzy player raises to eighty-four hundred. Should we fold, call, re-raise to sixteen thousand, or go all in?
What do you guys think? What do you guys think? What do you guys think? So uh, it was interesting because he flipped it. I said I would give checking ten points and betting. Yeah, I was just saying how I think it's interesting because I said if this is my quiz, I would give checking ten points and betting like eight. He had it flipped. He was betting and gave a check seven points. Basically the same thing, he just flipped it. Um, and I like all the reasons he said the merits for checking because that's definitely what I would do for those reasons. Um, and then they get into this spot. Sixes yells at me because he says you're always so afraid of getting check raised.
Well, unknown spazzy. Well, come on now. We all looked at the number of people check raise way too in front of us. But yeah, um, yeah, I think this is a interesting spot. I would just think we bet a lot of our, lot of the time in a spot like this if we don't have information because honestly, people just aren't gonna play aggressive enough and play two-fitter fold, especially at the stakes a lot of us are playing, right? Um, so that would be my argument. Yeah, this is, this is not the same, yeah, this is not the same caliber of player. Players are gonna be better, more aggressive. Put you in a cage a little bit more so I can get behind making a bigger, bigger size or checking.
Guys, check. Get out there and let us know what you do. I have a couple of folds right now, but uh, let us know. Be interactive.
With a Slim Fit.
And uh, let's, let's do this together. Um, yeah, I like I said, I see the merits for betting. I also see another merit for betting is that weak player is gonna fold a lot. Because if he was in the hand by himself, we would see bet and take it down always, right? And if we know he's folding like a giant portion of the time, unknown spazzy is still gonna have plenty of just check folds here. You know what I mean? Like, just because he's spazzy doesn't mean he's gonna be spazzy every time. So I consider merits for see betting for that reason.
Yeah, I, I, I still would, I mean, I get why he uses this size to kind of shut it down, but at this point in the hand, I don't think we can fold. Uh, we got one call in my chat, like, is anyone doing anything, is anyone in your chat folding this right now?
Dude, Reno's calling. Ginger's calling. Uh, Dude, Reno says good backdoor equity, too much fold.
Man, look at the price right now.
Too much to fold to a min check raise. Wee's learning turn calling. Two overs, Cyrus calls, calls, spazzy ass, spazzy calls, spazzy calls. There was a couple of folds as well. Um, nobody mentioned the key reason why I think we have to call here, um, which is the fact that he min raised it. So like-
Well, and look at the pot odds. With this much equity in position, like, that's it.
Two overs, two backdoors.
This much equity in position.
Three backdoors, right? A six, a nine, a nine, a jack, an ace and ten are probably a, are decent cards. An ace definitely the card.
Pick up equity on spades.
Yeah, so like way too many for him in this. Man, too many. Had he raised this hefty, you know, that would be full. Had he gone like three point five X or something, or three X, yeah, sure, maybe we fold then.
Making it sixteen hundred just doesn't seem like it accomplishes as much, other than him calling and probably checking back turns a lot, which would allow you to check back turn and get to river, but at the same time, it's, Dean, what'd you put at sixteen? What do you, this is so mu, so many chips to have to fold.
Yeah, and the great thing too about calling this, one, we're priced in, so beyond that, is that we have position. So if this guy checks the turn, you know, I start drooling. I'm like a savage animal.
Yeah, exactly, that.
He checks the turn, like, I'm taking this. I'm taking this spot. I'm going bet, bet and taking this spot. One way or the other, I'm taking this spot. All you have to do is check the turn and his hand's already mine. Done.
Yeah, because it feels like he's just still gonna have a lot of like jack nine, nine, I mean, even though we black blocked jack ten. Um, I mean, you know, hands like that, nine, ten, he can still use five, six and all kinds of different combos. Nine, six, we don't block, so he could use that sizing with that. So I don't think we raise here and get better to call and worst of folds, you know? We can, he still has worse hands in his range.
Yeah, uh, no justification for re-raising sixteen K. I think we all agree, Wee, that's probably the worst option. Um.
Yep.
Rich is asking, am I calling sixteen K on the turn if we pick up a flush or straight draw or an ace? So on the turn, and he bets again, if I pick up the flush and the straight draw, the pot is twenty, bet sixteen? That's ugly. I, that might, I have to think about that for a second. That might actually price me out if he goes sixteen. If he goes anywhere near half pot, I'm calling. Um, with an ace- Um, with an ace, would I raise an ace? No, I'm calling, cause he still has two pairs and sets and things. So I think I would just be calling terms no matter what I get, if he bets something.
Deep enough, right? I mean, yeah, you, you pick up equity, I mean. It just depends, is he gonna overback jam turn, you know, like, it just depends a lot on the sizing, like he just can't. No, it's, it, yeah, it's, it, a lot of times we're still, he's just gonna give us a price we can still call if we pick up equity, but if he overbets, shoves, things like that, that's when it just. Really sucks, we can't do anything.
We just fold, sucks. Um, but yeah, um. So, uh, holden that says call, like you do your X.
I'm just calling, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm calling, calling.
You ready?
Oh, that's what I was gonna say, I almost forgot. Um, yeah, the cool thing about the spades and the straight draws too is at the back door, so. If we just call those draws and then get there on the river, we're not gonna get credit for a flush draw a lot of the time. So we can still get paid. Alright, cool, call, let's go.
I think there's only two options here to consider and I think only one good option, and that's really calling. Uh, we're getting a great price. We have two overcards of the flush draw. He check raise is really small. He'd be doing this with an eight, a seven, a three, pocket fives. Pocket fours, pocket sixes, a ton of straight draws. We could have the best hand. If not, we have a lot of equity in the hand, so I think calling is the best option. I don't like re-raising to sixteen thousand, because I don't want him to then re-raise all in with a hand like king eight. Or nine, ten, or five, six, or some other whatever random stuff he's doing with, with, I wanna realize our equity. Um, and the other option I consider would be going all in. I wouldn't do it very option here. I think calling is significantly better. But at least when we go all in, if we get called, we realize all our equity, he could just go all in. I mean, he just caller all in with nine, ten and we get it in dominating him in really good shape. He could do it with five, six maybe and we get it in really good. So there are some benefits for shoving here as well. And I just don't think you can fold against the size of a check raise. We're getting way too good of a price. We do call. Turns to five of spades and a player checks, should we check? Bet twelve thousand or go all in?
Interesting, interesting, interesting. Um. I said before too, Lord help him if he checks the turn. But that five of spades specifically is an interesting call. Yeah, it was interesting. I was saying this on mute, but um, this is a really interesting spot, because I was saying like, Lord help him if he checks the turn. Five of spades specifically is a turn that I might not counsel. Because now straights, two pairs and hmm, I'm, I'm a little torn.
So six, nine gets there. If he had a hand like four, six of hearts that got there, four, six, uh, clubs got there. Um, but he can ha- also have a, all the offsuit ones at him being in the big blind, expecting he's gonna call a lot, so.
I would also argue that if he's a spazzy player, he's never checking his turn when he hits the straight, especially with spade draw out there, so he's always gonna see back the straight. So he's way heavier toward two pair and then weak top pair and then air. And so if that's the case, I'm kinda tor- leaning toward bet turn jam river.
I am, uh, we ran this, uh, we ran this spot in pile, right? Like, doesn't pile really just hate when we pick up equity like this and get check raised, so. There's one or two options here. I think we can go all in or check. I don't, I would not be betting twelve K here ever in a million years. It would just. Break my heart to get check raised. I mean, I, I, I know that's just can't be, like, I don't think that's the way.
I think you're right. I, I was saying the five of spades was kind of like a weird spade. I kinda wish it was like. I wish it was the queen of spades, you know what I mean?
Oh, the queen of spades is just auto jam, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
What up, Sean? So Sean says check, you get to realize equity for cheap. Uh, we got check here. If you bet twelve K, raises to twenty eighty, it's even harder. Um, check and see a river. So we got all checks in my chat.
I agree. It's cause it's the five of spades specifically. Holden nuts gives me the two month resub and the comment is check.
What up, we? Thank you for that host, man. But yeah, that's sick. I mean, I agree. Uh, I think. I would love to, I mean, I would, a part of me really would like to jam here, um, but at that point, we're. I mean, it's just too good of a card for his range, you know, for a few of his straight draws getting there. And we get to realize for free and, um, yeah, I really hate twelve K, so I think check is the option.
Pizza's bomb pot. Um, yeah, I, uh. Somebody two bears in his range called that jam. Yeah, and if he checks the river, then we can easily jam.
I mean, with two pair, would he check ra-? Well, I mean, seven, eight. Yeah, of cour- I mean, seven, eight can check raise. You can just, uh, nine, six. Yeah, that would be, but it's, I mean, unknown spazzy certainly has a lot of that kinda shit in his range, so yeah, it's a check.
And he's in the big blind too, which is, you know, gives him literally any two cards. Alright, we'll check it.
Alright, let's do it.
Good check.
We turn the nut flush draws is one of the better cards for us here on the term. Um, but I still think checking is the best op- best option due to the stacked pot ratio. It's about one and a half. There's twenty five K in the pot. We have about forty thousand behind. And I think we should check and the reason being, I don't wanna bet twelve thousand, because then if he check raises all in, we have to call it off. Um, and that's not very fun with this hand. Um, going all in doesn't really seem like a good option, because like. If we had like an overpair like nines, tens, jacks, greens, kings, I think we'd use the bet twelve thousand option, so I think I like checking this hand. And then if maybe betting twelve thousand, I'd rather bet twelve thousand with like ace ten of hearts to represent our overpairs. Um, rather than the ace ten of spades, because I don't wanna fold out that equity and they probably produce about the same amount of fold equity, so. We do check. The river is the king of diamonds and the unknown player checks again. Should we check? Bet sixteen thousand or go all in?
Well.
I know what I'm doing.
Yeah, it's, it's just getting shoved on. I'm just shoving, right? I mean.
I'm jamming this for sure, for sure.
Yeah, I mean, me too. Just, I'm, I'm just, yeah.
For sure. Cap says things he did, so he's checking. I think there's a lot of seven X out there, miss straight draws that hit pairs. Um, all that kinda stuff. A pissed off jam. Oh, no, no, no. I am fist pump jamming. Fist pump of like, oh baby, he never checks the straight on the river, ever.
Yeah, yeah, he's, he's never, he's never, he's kinda capped, he's kinda capped, right?
He's got a weak ass eight or a weak ass seven.
And miss draws.
All in.
Yeah, like he could have five, six here and then just beat you, right? And then, uh, yeah, he could check raise five, six and then just turn a five to have showdown value and just try to take it. Um, we don't beat enough, but we can rap. He's got just so, some weak pairs, miss draws in his range. Um, yeah, I'm just, I'm just jamming. We have enough combos, uh. Ace, king suited, you know, that can call this. You know, we can have ace, king, uh, spades, hearts, clubs. Um, even some stubborn ace, king, high, uh, king, queen of those same suits, king, jack of those same suits. Then we would call a check, a small check raise with if we decided to see that light. Um, yeah, I'm just, we have kings in our range.
Yeah, and like sixteen K can be called by a lot of things.
A five, six, I mean, uh, 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 you know, some. Some weird seven or something, I don't know, seven, nine or some shit, if he's weird spazzy.
Yeah, I love it.
What do you guys think? Uh, and we kinda bogarted that one.
We did, we got too excited. I was like, oh.
Slim fit says I'm good with twelve to sixteen K. I think that gets hero. I don't know, I feel like that gets.
I'm sure there's a small percent of the time, Rich, where we do win if we check here, but I think we always win when we jam here. So it's like, you know, I'd say maybe something like somewhere between forty and sixty percent of the time when we check here, we. We win.
So Slim fit says, you don't think the gym shows off, you missed it. Well, first off, it doesn't, there's no front door flush draws. He made, our range is very well disguised and just has a lot of overpair overcards in it, and we would check some turns. As well with some, uh, strong hands, so yeah, I mean, I just think that king is just too good of a card to blow off.
Absolutely, and Rich says, isn't he betting with five, six or nine, ten? I would say. When he raises the nine, ten, he gets to buy the river, um.
It's just my opinion, Slim.
I think if he has nine, ten, he should bet the turn. I kind of agree with that. Five, six, I think, uh, should check when they hit the five always. Because the five, six is in a similar spot to we are with the spade draw, where five, six doesn't wanna lead into us and then get check raised off. Um, so that's why five, six wouldn't. Um, but I would say if you have a seven, a three or a five, and I jam here. You gotta have huevos of steel to make that call.
So let's see if Matt chooses the option to make his bet sizing look more like value, rather than thinking our shove looks too polar. But on this run, I don't know, like on this board, I just think I would prefer to jam, but. There's no apparent draws. Up front that really miss that we have, I guess, we can have nine, ten ourselves. They're open in Tibet and then called a check raise, but you know, I think that's about it.
Holdman, I see your comment and it's funny, but I'm not gonna read it, cause I'm gonna keep the stream family friendly. But he made a dirty comment about why he's going all in.
Yeah, I just think we get too caught too often if we go sixteen K by a seven and eight. Where we jam, it just puts max pressure on those hands. Do we have enough king X for a tournament live? Alright, let's do it. Good luck us.
Kind of a tricky spot here on the river. The king is obviously a better card for our range than his. We have hands like. Ace, king, king, queen with the backdoor flush draws that we've hit, king, jack with the backdoor flush draws. So we definitely have some hands here that wanna value that, uh, and I think it's close between, you could bet sixteen thousand here. Or you could go all in, which I think is a little better option. We're gonna be kinda polarizing when we bet here to a king or better. So that's why we can go all in here. Um, but what sizing you use kinda depends on the opponent. Some opponents never call all ins, some opponents will always call the sixteen thousand, so kinda use your judgment there, but. Checking, I actually think is the best option here, cause I think we still have some showdown value. We beat hands like ten, nine, nine, six suited. Well, we don't beat nine, six, sorry. We beat ten, nine, jack, nine, uh, random like ace, four, ace deuce. The check raised the flop, um. Sometimes you just see some random stuff. It's not very often that we win here and betting may well be better, because we don't win that often, but I think we still win this pot. Fifteen percent of the time, ten percent of the time, and that's twenty five hundred chips that we win. And I don't expect this opponent maybe to, he might not even fold an eight. Um, and I just rather would not risk my stack going all in here, because I just don't know how often this guy's gonna fold when we don't have much of a read. I did check and we got lucky. Our opponent had jack, nine of spades, so we did win the pot and he had one of those check raises that gave up. I think he missed some bets there to win the pot for sure, so, yeah, that was a good hand. Don't fold the small check raises.
Yeah, um, interesting spot, Jack nine suited. I actually love the check raise and he missed the spot for sure by not betting the turn and jamming. I was just saying, oh, Jack nine of spades kinda screwed up, right? Cause they should have bet the turn and jam the river themselves.
Yeah, I'm back now, I'm sorry. Played it a little bit, uh, longer. That was good. That was interesting.
Yeah, I.
I kinda disagree. I mean, I, I, I'm probably just jamming there. Maybe at the stakes we play or, he says it's a guy he doesn't know who might call off stuff like that. So I get it, you know, if we put, if we have any history, we know the guy's gonna potentially just call us down light if he showed it. I might be a little bit more wary, but most guys, I'm just jamming, but.
Beat says, uh, Matt is a net. Marlon says he's never checking here, Matt. Cyrus says, because you have hate in your heart, Marlon, angry. Um, yeah, I. Sheesh, I, well, here's the thing, like, the jam was seven points, so it's not like it was a mistake.
Well, against this particular opponent, he might, he just thought the other option was better, but in a vacuum. He probably thinks jamming is best here, because like he said, he only thought he'd be winning this pot when checked. A very small, what'd he say, fifteen percent or something? Ten, fifteen percent of the time he thought he'd win at showdown? That's not very, you know, I, I think we just win, I, I think we win, what, what would you say, seventy five percent of the time, eighty five percent of the time when jam? But we lose our entire stack, you know, the rest of the time when called.
Yeah, but the deal is we pick up twenty five K, seventy five percent of the time, and then lose forty K, twenty five percent of the time, it's a call, it's a jam.
Fifteen percent, yeah. He said he even thought fifteen, oh, fifteen percent of the time he thought he'd win, so yeah, I think I'm always gonna take jam.
Is that number correct? It's a guesstimation, holden nuts. I mean, you have to kinda guess against your opponent's range. There is some argument with the fact that he's a spazzy player, so he might call off light.
Right, and he, that's what, yeah, that's what let him, and he would have, I, also what helps with that is a spazzy player. It's gonna have more straight draws that are missing random shit. I mean, I didn't even think ace for ace. Deuce on this flop is a check raise, but you know, um, it makes sense if that opponent is just gonna play. The texture more so than his actual hand.
Yeah, uh, Rick says, I think we can only shove here if we know our opponent is folding a pair on this board and I think we just look like we are bluffing. When we check turn and then shove river, when most draws don't get there. I feel like I always get picked off when I take that line. The thing is, is that a lot of draws did get there. There's a lot of two pairs out there and we hit a lot of kings and then then we jam like. It might be the stakes you're playing, Rich. I think you might get called more at the low in the micros. I'm. I'm not saying that you're there, I'm just saying that. I think you get caught more there, because if you watch my stream, I, I take this line a lot and you'd be surprised. I had a sick one last night on my way to the final table with twelve left, you know, um, similar, similar situation. Um, so it definitely works. I wonder how often you're taking this move, Rich, because if you take it a couple of times, it gets stung and you're, then you're like, oh, this move might not be the best play to play this far. May, might be not a, a big enough sample. But yeah, cause I'm jamming the sixes.
Yeah, I mean, I'm also doing it when I get there with the king as well, you know, and I will have kings in my range, cause I'm. Definitely, he's, like he said, never fold to those small check raises and you will wanna see that some of your king, jack of hearts in this spot. And the guy will make this mistake. It will check through and you will get there, so you will wanna. Jam to kinda make it polar, so he can hero you off sometimes as well.
So here's a question, what would you do if you had like a set of threes? Would you check back turn and then jam river?
Nah, I mean, I'm probably betting turn. To set up a more, a better SPR, charging some of his draws and getting value some, from some of his eight and seven X.
Or folding if he jams into you when a.
No, I'm never folding.
Or a straight card comes, a six, a nine.
I mean, it would have to, it's, half the board would have to run out really bad, but yeah, I mean, we're talking about, we're talking about folding a set here.
Well, that, I'm talking about checking the turn here is why I'm talking about folding a set.
Oh, yeah, I'm not checking. That's why I'm betting, yeah, that's why I'm betting. Also, we set up a better SPR on the river to jam.
I agree with that. I just wonder when we have a set of threes here and we lead and then a check raise, that's kinda weird and shitty.
Alright, you wanna do another one?
Absolutely.
Do it. Alright, you pick. What are you thinking? We gotta mix up instructors.
Bah, uh, alright, so we'll skip six hundred then. Well, I mean, we're nice and warm, let's jump into Assassin Auto. Against a terrified net, so we know this is gonna be.
At a ten dollar ITT. I was just there. I was just at one of these guys, so yeah, let's look at, he's got jack four. Oh, so this is good. Wait a minute. I'm gonna pause it and start over. Alright, let's do it. It's forty seconds. Take your time. I paused it.
I'm ready, let's go.
Let's do it.
Hey everyone, in this hand, we have a very specialized situation, so I'm very excited for it. MTT final table. Big international site, thousands of players. You're down to this final three. You have jack four offsuit in the small blind. Uh, the button holds. The big line is a terrified net. As far as you can tell, so far at this final table, you have nine point eight million at one hundred K, two hundred K with a twenty two point five K ante. Here, do you wanna fold, call, raise to four hundred K or raise to six hundred K?
Alright.
Yeah, we're just talking about how his videos are always super, super low. So he's saying that he had a final table of a ten dollar. It sounded like a poker stars or a poker, or a, a party poker, cause he said it was a massive international site. And that this villain was a terrified knit and they're at this final table. So if this is a stars tournament, there's a decent amount of money up top. And they're at this final table, so if this is a stars tournament, there's a decent amount of money up top for a ten dollar buy-in. If this guy's a, a ten dollar rack, he really wants.
Probably the biggest score of his lifetime shit, you know? Probably this guy, one of his biggest scores of his life. Uh in that case, um. I think. What do you guys think? So I got six hundred K in my chat. If I'm playing, I'm not calling three-handed. So he's saying you just have a raised or fold strategy, slim fit, okay?
Uh yeah, uh I have one six hundred K in my, my chat. Guys, get out there, let me know what you think you would do. I am slightly conflicted myself.
I'm raising, I mean, I'm just. Four hundred K. I mean, if there, there's no option at like, there's no four hundred and sixty K or something like that.
Right, like I would love, I would love a five hundred K.
Yeah, no, some, somewhere in, even, yeah, I would like a four, but four hundred and sixty-five, four hundred and seventy, eighty, just to make it a little bit. Uh bigger, but I think I'm just gonna go four hundred.
So for me. But I like either call and just limply cuz he's terrified and you're just gonna take it down a good jillion percent with a shitty hand. Or raise six hundred. I'm one of the two.
Just to apply, well, he's never gonna three bet without it, so maybe just shutting the shit down, raising to six hundred.
But he can always just call four hundred. Right, I mean, like, that's just easy to do with anything.
And I know, that's why I would like a little bit more. That's four hundred. Wish I could just make it like.
Five hundred, four fifty.
I know, somewhere in there would be, if it was a five hundred, I would choose that every time, right? Uh so yeah, I guess in that case. Yeah, six hundred.
Ginger says fold. The problem with the fold, Ginger, is that we know this guy's a terrified knit. So we should just raise terrified knit as often as we can. And if they raise back, we just run for our lives cuz they're terrified knit, but until they fight back, you just pounce, 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 pounce.
Towards call, oh, let's.
I am leaning towards call, but like, uh in game I would raise and I would raise somewhere between four hundred and six hundred. But given my options here, I mean. He's got a rejam stack, so I guess I'm leaning raise cuz he's got a rejam stack, and so I'm gonna make him jam. Sounds like you two years ago, Ginger, not now.
I think we go six hundred, although my body says four, but there's not a four hundred-ish number, so it's, if it's just four.
Says, are you limping jack four suited? I am personally, yes.
Alright, I got six hundred in my chat. One hundred and eighty to five hundred forty K depth, yeah, I like that. Alright, we doing it? You checking?
I guess, given this example, I'll raise, so I'm gonna raise six hundred.
Alright, I'm just gonna go six. I was, I wanna go four, but.
The contrarian.
Yeah, let's start again. Alright, alright, alright. I'm gonna do one of these two.
I'm picking six hundred. Ready, go?
There's actually a lot of merit for every play here. Uh if you said fold, yeah, it's jack four offsuit, uh that's totally fine. Uh if you said call, I actually think. You know, I always think that play is really overblown. I, I think people like it a lot more because it. Appeals to their inner gambler. I wanna see if I hit the flop. But this is one situation, it's okay because most likely. The terrified nets only gonna raise with their best hands and they're gonna check everything else and if they miss the board, they're just gonna fold. Uh raise to four hundred K I like the most because a lot of times. You will get a fold out of a terrified net at a final table. This is a really specialized situation, which is. There's sometimes, there's a guy, I said terrified, so I want you to imagine deer in the headlights. You will see that at final tables where some guy is just, he is out. He is not playing and if he's playing, he's playing big, right? So you don't have to risk that much, so you could go to four hundred K here. Uh the other thing about four hundred K that I like. If you said six hundred K, that's a profitable bet, that's fine as well. The only problem is, let's say he calls. The, the problem I have is, let's say the board comes like eight, two, two. Well, you see that that board to get him to fold his high cards and he calls a little quickly. So you think maybe he does still have high cards, right? Well, now you don't really have a double barrel because the next bet is pretty much all in. If you make it four hundred K, you don't have that problem. So this is one situation where uh the guy I was analyzing goes for a very odd play and I actually like it. Uh in, in the actual tournament, he kept going to four hundred K here and this guy kept folding, so I thought it was just perfectly tied. So, but on this hand, we raised the four hundred K and he calls. And we get this board, so here on this flop, do you want to check? Do you wanna bet three hundred and thirty-three thousand to eight sixty-five point five? Do you wanna, wanna bet four hundred thousand or do you wanna bet five, five, five?
Interesting spot. I'm gonna turn this volume down so I don't get blasted by sixes. Alright, so uh question was, why bet six hundred if his net is gonna fold almost any race? Uh so I would like to raise slightly above four hundred.
Get toe back out here.
That wasn't an option, so that's why we chose six hundred.
So guys. I felt like that was the best option. Well, it just sucks because I wouldn't personally, against a terrified net or whatever. Go like four hundred and thirty K, four hundred and forty, sixty, four sixty or something like that. I would hate to just min. I guess it really doesn't matter. Uh but I would, I would just try to make it look a little bit bigger and I, I do this a lot, but.
I agree, a hundred percent agree. And um. Uh Ginger says folding for non poker gods, it's fine. I, and I say sure. Uh I really would, I'm really curious because six hundred was a nine, four hundred was a ten. And he said calling was a decent option against this player and folding is standard. So I wonder what points folding and, and calling got. It couldn't have been that low. Like a seven and an eight, seven and six or something. It was that close for all the options here, which I find kinda interesting.
Yeah, it was very close and what he's saying is you're not really making a mistake and the EV is gonna be close no matter what your decision is. It just depends on what you think you can get away with, with this particular opponent. Pretty much, and versus a knitting when we should be raising, we probably don't have to risk much. Much more than the minimum is what he's saying for it to be optimal.
Yep. What do you guys do in the chat? I see a three, three, three and I see a check. I am again a little conflicted. Because if this guy's defending, he should be defending with. Like aces and paint. Right? Cuz he's the net, and so he wouldn't be defending as much with like, I don't know, seven, nine. Especially not for a three X. It's always gonna be paint when he sacks, right? Weak, weak pair or something. Um so part of me wants to see about this, although without that specific read, I would check. Another thing that we didn't know at the time, either Assassin, Assassin Auto said in the video that we didn't know. We were making a decision is that the other dude had min-raised a bunch and this dude had folded a bunch. But having known that, min-raising makes more sense.
Well, man, in this case. I think we watched a video with Assassin Auto before. And he wanted to use the big size for one street and just shut the shit down and give up. That was his rationale. But I'm guessing it gets a terrified knit. Do we like using the same premise but for a smaller sizing, assuming his continuing range is just gonna be what it is? Uh almost in elastic on a board like this, so we should just use a bet size to make some shit fold and then go away, you know?
Yeah, I'm really torn up between the three, three, three for that exact reason and checking.
Yeah, I think I'd go three, three, three here. Our hand, uh it's a terrified knit. I think he's just gonna not. Float or continue with some hands that he should. Um like some king highs, uh even if he does just call with an ace high, he probably doesn't continue. If he has like ace deuce suited or something like that, he might just fold.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Um but yeah, I agree. Rich says if we don't see back here, we're just giving up and trying or. Are trying to get a showdown or are we ever checking and then betting the turn? Um I would check and definitely give up if he bets at it at all.
Famous Five says, I think even as a knit, he jams the top of his range, so this has to hit some of his range, right?
Does it? What calls here besides jack ten, queen ten, king ten? And maybe ace ten cuz he's a nick, so he's not the guy who's calling. Well, again, I, I, I guess I'm conflicted because I feel like even nets are gonna call with seven, nine, especially suited for a min raise. This is why I kinda like.
But they're also calling, he's also calling with like. Chi- king, jack, he may not even jam, right? Or is he just, he might not jam ace deuce offsuit. Ace four offsuit, you know, ace five, and just give that kinda shit up. Um instead of just jamming it, even with twenty, he might think he's just deep enough. He doesn't have to get it in. I'm leaning three, three, three. I mean, you know, we, you know, you already know, like. We, I think I'm just batting here cuz it has no showdown and a terrified knit is going to play more straight port. And fold some high cards.
That even a terrified net's gonna call a lot of shit that hits us for a min raise and. So I'm just gonna check and evaluate turn. If he checks back here, then I know I'm good.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess there are some cards we can just bet on a turn if he does check. Like a five, a seven, a nine, all kinda give us straight draws, those kinda cards, a seven. Um so yeah, we can just bet all those cards on turn cuz he'd likely have that same range just giving up. But I'm still gonna bet.
Alright, what's my chat saying? Four hundred, four hundred, four hundred and.
You got some four hundred.
I have three, 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 threes and three four hundreds and one check, including my check, so I guess we're not checking cuz. The crowd says four hundred or three, three, three.
He thinks for a min raise, he'd be defend, like, so this is going to hit some of his defend range is what you're kinda getting at?
Me?
No, see, the thing is, no, I'm just reading in my chat. He says, I think for a min raise, he'd be defending twos through sixes, his will aces, king, jack off. So that range of hands, C-bet is trying to get a fold, two through fives.
Yes, I agree with all that, but I also would think that seven, nine, eight, six, nine, ten, jack. Or queen ten, king ten, all that shit. Does the same for a min.
Yeah. It's just really hard to say. He said this guy had been folding a lot, so, but this board kinda hits some of the hints he would defend with. But alright, I'm, I'm, I think I'm C-betting. Alright, guys.
Cap, the beat wasn't happening. I'm not sure what happened on your end. I, I don't know, I'm tied here and I wanna.
Can you hear me?
So.
Can you hear me, To?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Alright, cool, yeah, cool. I thought you lost me.
No, no, I'm good. I just don't know what I'm gonna do cuz I have a tie in the chat and I would do the check.
I got Famous Five's saying five, five, five. I know, I've seen this, that's kinda tempting because I've seen him go really big and. Shut the shit down and then just give up. You know, if he does continue, I've seen him use that line before. Let's think about what three, three, three does to the pot. Three, three, nah, that's still fine. SPR is still gonna be over one.
Yeah, put a million out there.
Yep, alright, let's do it. You ready?
No, I don't know what I'm gonna check, pick, uh. Alright, Cap, you're the decider. What are you doing? You're the tiebreaker. Rio says check, uh oh. That was, that was, that's not good. That made it on all, all three, all of them were tied out. Hey, what's up, John? How you doing, man? Welcome to the stream.
Let's do it, buddy. I'm restless.
I don't know what I'm doing. You didn't help either. Um where, what are you betting?
Three, three, three.
God, I mean, that's kinda where I guess I'm. Alright.
Ready?
Yeah.
Wrecked.
Damn it, why don't I listen to myself?
Wrecked. Somebody in your chat, the cap was right. Good job, Cap out there. I don't know who that is.
That was last minute Rio coming in with the check. I agree, Ja- uh Rio.
Nice job, Rio.
Uh we did raise free, dude. We min-raised free.
Yeah, I think we fold. He threw out some other sides and like, come on, I don't know, I'm folding. Yeah, I don't, I don't know why this hand would be here as. This is like a jabatty hand. Is it really this standard? He's really gonna put a standard spot like this in here where we just fold?
Wasn't really that standard because of the min raise and the check flop. We had a lot of people who were betting, right? The check on the flop fooled almost everybody. Right? So this part, I think, is pretty standard. We snappy fold. Snap fold is the net and he's betting, snap, snap, snappity, snap, snap, snappity, snap, snap, fold. But I think the check on the flop fooled everybody but me and Ginger and Rio.
Slim fit baby also in my chat said, uh. He said he checked was his first option as well.
Nudus says fuck it, one point two mil.
Yolo and then just be damn near committed. You put in one point two, two point four, he gets three million, then you're, you're committed with like backdoors. One point two mil equals committed with jack four high.
Uh dude, Renan missed it, uh yeah, we agreed that. There was a little bit of thing. This guy was a super net at the final table. Um he had been folding the min raises from the other guy in the past, dude. And um the options were four hundred, a min raise or a three X. Um we all chose three X because we thought min raise was gonna get defended a lot. In game, we all agreed we'd do something in between. Min raise and three X. Uh does a knit bet fold a ten here though if we go big raise? I mean. I'm just never trying to get top pair to fold. Like that's not, unless. You know, it comes four liner on the turn or something. But like, it's just, yeah, I mean, this guy's a net. We can just pick, pick away, pick away, pick away, pick away. We don't need to. Get crazy when he.
Kind of force it when he's actually showing aggression. Uh there's gonna be one point five million in the pot. He's gonna have like, if we do just decide to call with jack four high. And if we raise eight, there's gonna be what, two point four million? And he's gonna have like two point six behind or something? Nine, two point seven, yeah, three point two, so yeah, he's gonna have pot behind if we do decide to raise a little bit less. And I just hate it. I think it's just a fold.
Yeah, it's an easy fold. Uh Nudus only said that because we like, Assassin likes big sizing. The difference is, is he'll do big sizing on a flop to shut shit down, but he's not necessarily gonna do a big sizing here where like.
His range.
His raising and. That's just this, run, run, just run. Ginger says fold pretty seems smart, but you're being results oriented. I think if we raise four fifty, five hundred, somewhere in that range, we get more folds. And then we can evaluate flops and go from there. I would actually then check flop and then figure it out.
Yeah, if I raised four forty or something like that, I'm just checking his flop. But I don't know, I would probably just see that here if he ever just, just did call it, uh when you'd have some. Yes, on a turn, it's not, it's never pretty, is it?
Nudus said, but the guy is a terrified knit, but here's the thing. The terrified knit, look at him, he's betting, he's not scared.
Alright, I'm, I'm folding.
Yeah, we're all folding, let's go.
Alright, let's do it.
We're just gonna go ahead and fold here. Let me explain what's going on here, guys. So. I find one of the biggest mistakes I see in developing regs is they see that every single flop, right? And. This is an ultra coordinated board, okay? And more than that, if this guy was the normal guy and you raised the four hundred K, I'd say just go ahead and fire. Uh if you said three hundred and thirty three on this flop, that's fine. He's probably gonna fold high cards. If you said four hundred, yeah, that's fine. Uh probably folds even some small pairs, right? Uh if you said five, 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 that one doesn't make as much sense to me, but. Since this ten, eight, six board. Think, you're not facing a big blind calling range of thirty-five percent of the hands because this guy is such a nit and he's so terrified. It's more like a twelve, fifteen percent range, right? And think about it, he would have re-raised all in with all of his big cards, so what does that leave? That leaves his middle cards. That board is all over that range. You gotta hit the brakes here and let it go. Uh if you said, by the way, on this hand, this is a very interesting hand. Uh, if you said, by the way, on this hand, this is a very interesting hand. I just love the check fold. Uh, if you said six hundred pre-flop, uh, that's fine. If you said call, that's fine. Four hundred K was very difficult. If you even said fold, that's fine. I just wanted. The thing I find that was really instructional on this hand and what I really loved about what this guy did is he understood. This guy's just terrified net. He's re-raising all of his big cards all in. He's folding his small card. This is all over his range. I thought that was a very astute check fold. I love seeing this hand.
Alright, I agree.
Oh, yeah, that's a very quote astute check fold.
I agree. No, it's, it's, it's good and. The, like, the fact that he didn't just go bigger pre-flop. And still like condensed, fold out some of that shit. He went small, so he knows it's gonna be kinda coordinated in here to lie of his range.
Yeah, it's like we said, like even the nets are gonna defend for one blind with seven, nine and weird shit that hits this eight, six.
Any eight, all of it, so many, ten, seven, nine, ten, you know, jack nine. So yeah, I mean, I'm thinking in terms of, that's why the men raise, I, I'd prefer to go a little bit bigger than men raise because. We can start to condense if we go a little bit bigger. You know, and then he just shoves and then when he does call, he has more high card type hands. But when we go four hundred, fuck, he's in there, right? He's just in there with a lot of his range. So that was very good. And, yeah, I agree. A lot of people made a lot of good points in my chat as well, so that's good.
I think we were tied on that one and tied on the first. I think it's a tie right now. I don't think we've, I don't think we've deviated. I said I would and then didn't, didn't do it. I didn't click, you know what I mean? So I think, I think we're the same.
Yeah, I should've went to. Uh-oh, we gotta, we gotta do the tiebreaker. What's next?
What happens? Let's do a Jonathan little one. Let's do five ninety eight cuz it's a lag with multiple people in it.
Five, nine, eight, ooh, multi-way pots, three, six. Alright, let's do it.
Here we have Queen Jack offsuit in a thousand dollar tournament playing sixteen big blinds deep. That's not a lot. The button, a tight aggressive player raises and then a loose aggressive player from the small blind calls. Should we fold, call, re-raise to forty two thousand or go all in?
I'm already conflicted.
Hmm, what do you guys like here?
I'm already conflicted.
Already, right? It's only two op- I mean, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna see what chat says first.
I agree with two options.
Yeah, so Bennett says, call it, call it. Uh, we got two calls in my chat. Oh, boy. Three calls, V I P A T L, my dude says call. I would venture, eh, so we got all calls.
I got, uh, two calls, two shoves, three shoves, one fold. Three, I got a lot of shoves. I love you guys, toe army. I just wanna say from the.
The toe army out there shoving.
The toe army is all, we're, we're the same. I love the jam.
The sixes, the sixes crew loves.
I mean, one, we're just getting a good price to, to go with it.
What a burnsy.
And two, like, even a tag is gonna raise jack ten from the button.
Yeah, I'm shoving, but I mean, I feel like I'm shoving here. Because we gotta think about like what his call range would even be here, right? Like what? What percentage of hands is opening here and then what is he calling with? We should just maybe I'll pull it up.
Jacks, block ace queen, block ace jack, block king queen.
So when he opens button, oh, you know what? Button opening range. Hold on. So this is a button opening range, at least just the basic one, right? And I got, I just pulled up. Here, so what do you think he's just calling with? He's probably only gonna call.
Obviously aces, kings, queens, jacks, tens. If he's good, he should be calling with like nines, eights and sevens. Sixes is fricking close. I think five, actually six is probably a call. Fuck, God, I think I was. You can fold twos, you can fold threes, fours is murky and I think you call fives plus if I'm picturing the ICM.
Should be calling there.
And then calling. Like, probably ace.
Should be calling this.
Ace, nine suited plus.
So in the range I have here, I have fives plus, maybe even fours plus. Uh, I mean, you know, depending, uh, if we gotta run it. Uh, ace, ten off plus, ace nine suited plus, king, jack suited, queens and yeah.
That's your personal range?
No, I'm just thinking that would, I mean, do you think that's? I mean, yeah, I think that's what he's calling with. That's what ten percent of hands and he's opening.
Exact range. I love that.
Yeah, like, yeah, this range here, maybe king, queen off. Do you remember we put it in, uh, when we were running it, king, queen off was a call?
In this spot when it's button versus big one, yes.
Yeah, yeah, so king, queen off was a call as well. So that's eleven percent of hands. Um, so given that in his opening range there is going to be thirty seven percent on a tight end. I mean, that's a tight.
Raising eight, nine suit here.
What, what the fuck are, they have to. Even you, you have to, right? So right there you got built in fold equity with some blockers and the playability versus the pairs. I think it's a jam.
Everyone in my chat was jamming. I'm jamming too.
Yeah, I mean, calling again, a, a loose aggressive player. You know what else is nice? Because the loose aggressive player here would be raising a lot of a strong range, right? I mean, he'd be. My findings more three bets in here. I don't think he traps as much. He'd probably be three betting more, so he might just have a weaker. More capped range when he calls and there's more dead money out there.
Yeah, exactly. Like, if this, I would jam this regardless of using the pot or not, but the fact that he's in this pot makes me wanna jam even more.
Having the tag fold, keeping the lag in with a lag. Even they having to lag in there, it's, there's just so much dead money.
Yeah, we don't even know if we hit a cleaner or jack.
Forty five K out there, you know?
Cause he's still gonna have king, jack. But they may not call the jam with those, but they will definitely raise those and call the flap with those.
Right. Yeah, I think that's, I'm just trying to look at this opening range on mine and seeing if. Nah, this is just a tight ass race. Thirty seven percent on the button, that's tight. So, yeah, I think that's good.
Definitely fold a weak ace, Marlon, should. Mathematically, he needs to fold a lot of his weak.
Alright, I'm jamming. I've talked myself into it. I can't, I can't help myself it. You're getting caught at least by one hand better than you, eh, I don't know about that. I think the lag can fold a lot. Alright, Jonathan's probably gonna call, but you ready?
Yeah, I already cheated and hit the button, so I won't ruin it for you. No spoiler.
In this scenario, we have only two options. We can either call because we're getting good odds closing the action. Or we can go all in if we expect to have a decent amount of fold equity. Now. It's very hard to know how much fold equity you have in this spot because. I don't know if the tight aggressive player is opening only the nuts, in which case obviously we don't wanna shove cuz we're gonna get called a lot. And I also don't know if the loose aggressive player in the small blind is a bit of a calling station. Because if he is, then we don't wanna shove cuz we're gonna get called a lot and we're gonna be flipping-ish, maybe even a little bit behind. So in this scenario, if I don't know what my opponents are doing, I'm gonna be very inclined to call because I know we can't screw that up. But there's certainly scenarios where I will jam. I don't wanna make it forty two thousand because then putting in half our stack and we certainly. Can't get out of the way then, but we're gonna have queen high on a lot of flops, so that's not ideal. And folding is not good because this hand is pretty decent. So I'm gonna call here the majority of the time, but certainly there are scenarios where I'm gonna shove. Now flop comes, ten, nine, six, and our opponent in the small blind, the loose aggressive player leads. And me and the pre-flop raiser for forty thousand, basically the size of the pot. Should we fold, call, or go all in?
Marlon says, what? Don't be fooled, Ben. Going all in was nine points, so definitely not a mistake. Definitely not a mistake. Um, and now we're facing this bet here. Uh, in its pot.
Alright. I can't hear To. To, you there?
Yes, but give me a sec.
I think I lost To, guys. Can you guys hear me?
I got you. I was struggling with the mute button.
Oh, okay.
I, I could, I was saying that I could hear you. Um, yeah, so, uh, I, I knew Jonathan was gonna call here. Uh, going online, not a mistake. Nine points is not a mistake.
No, no, nine points can be good a lot, you know, I think it's, he's just saying it's very close between the two. Here, he just felt like this guy might, might call my. Perception of a loose aggressive player would be one that would probably have such a wide range here that we just have even more fold equity. So and that would just see a little bit more dead money, but he might've thought this was the loose aggressive player. That might overcall call with a hand like ace nine offsuit, ace ten offsuit, you know, stuff like that. So that makes. So that kinda makes sense as well in the spot.
Jamming is one of those spots where like jamming again, nine points is absolutely profitable. Yeah, and we tend to go to best. So I got a couple of folds. What else are you guys doing out there? I know what I'm doing.
So, uh-oh, people were, everybody right now is like, I'm all in fam, shove it now, all in. I think everybody is shoving over this with no fold equity.
I got a couple of folds here.
We don't have a club. He says all in and a revive and a one K.
By the fold. I don't wanna give an answer yet, Marlon, so I'm not gonna comment on that.
Um, yeah, I don't, I don't. I'm just waiting as well. So right now we just have everybody in my chat jamming.
Nudus folded to be at specifically the Queen Jack clubs, but I mean, dude, you got the open end shit flush draw, that's raining.
That's a snap.
Marlon shoving, no fold equity. You wanna put your turn live online, hoping to hit it straight, says Rich. Is this a final table? No. This is a final table.
This is not a final table. This is just.
So there's no ICM involved.
We realize equity and we're short. We got fourteen behind now.
Yeah, what are you doing, Sis?
Uh, no, man, I'm not crazy. It's, I'm, I'm, I don't know why I'm leaning for, towards this fold here with the player behind. Uh, we don't know if he. Is just leading like the nut flush draw here, sets, two pairs, what? I do know one thing, we're probably a dog, um, and a big one. That could be a big dog.
We, we are priced in here, I think. I'm going all in. We're priced in. We have sixteen bigs and an open and straight draw with two overs.
Fourteen, yeah, we got four, we have fourteen behind.
Yeah, we're priced in.
He could be leading a ten. Oh, my god. Yeah, even with the tight player behind, tight player probably misses this board a lot. I wish we had a club. I wish we had one fucking club, man.
I mean, I'm cool without it. That means he's got more flush draws, um. Yeah, I wanna see something real quick. Uh, I'm looking up some odds. Gotta sneeze, hang on.
Bless you.
Thank you. Fuck, I'm allergic, I'm allergic to check raises. Alright, give me a second here. We have Queen Jack, random. Let's give them like.
Yeah, let's put in, you can put it in here.
No club to make it nice and fair. And the flop is ten of clubs, nine of clubs, six of spades. So we are coin flipping dead ass even against ace ten with no club here.
Yeah, he can have.
And we're getting two to one.
Well, we gotta go. Yeah, this has to get in.
Now, if he's got something fucked like, let's say, nine, six of hearts or something. We're sixty seven, thirty two. So if he's got two pair, we're fucked.
Alright.
He's got seven, eight. We're similarly fucked. So if he's got two pair or a straight, we're fucked, but if he's got a ten, we're both. And if he's got a draw, what if he's got like?
What if he has a draw? Oh, no, I was trying to run it on my screen.
Uh, if he has aces and clubs. King has clubs are gonna be the same and then if he's got like some random clubs, like seven, four clubs, we're flipping. So we're only screwed if he's got a club draw with an over.
It doesn't like make you, it's not concerning that there's a player behind on the button as well. We're not taking into consideration the. Small percentage of times he finds a way to get it in as well with his overpairs, his kings, his aces, the small percentage of the time he has those. I don't know. I mean, I know everybody says get it in, but goddamn, man, I hate it. I don't know. It doesn't feel good to me.
I think my battle, we have to.
Yeah, I kind of agree. I mean, I'm probably gonna shrug and be like, fuck, man. But.
What is this damn thing? Thousand dollar WS feature, yeah.
Sets to air only protection. Alright, you guys, so anybody in my chat, everybody in my chat's going with it. You're going with it. I wanna fold. I, I know we can. I re- I just want to. With the player behind and him committing and us being at best flipping, if not dominated.
Uh, GL doesn't punt, it's not a punt cap. This is a math call, for sure.
Guys, I wanna fold. Alright, let's do it. You ready?
Yolo. Says fold.
An absolutely miserable scenario. Normally, when you have a draw. You're either getting the right price to call, counting your immediate odds plus implied odds, or you have some fold equity. And here. I don't think we have any fold equity cuz if I jam, we're gonna get called and our opponent's range to lead here is gonna be made hands, which we lose to. And draws, which, you know, for the most part, we lose to. So for that reason, I don't really love raising, so we have no fold equity. Next, are we getting the right price to call? Well, we're getting two to one, but we know we're only gonna get there on the turn about twenty percent of the time with a straight. And even then, sometimes the club beats us. And, uh, same thing with an overpair, right? Obviously, we're a little bit more, maybe like thirty five percent if we count all of our. Um, overcard draws for top pair, but even then, some of those beat us. So, I think we need to fold and I don't even think it's all that close. Even though the opponent's loose and aggressive, I mean, he's probably not leading here with seven, five offsuit or something like that. If he is leading with seven, five offsuit, well, then that changes everything completely. But for the most part, in this scenario, facing a two point five big blind raise, the opponent should probably be reasonable enough. And don't forget, we have to worry about the player on the button. If the player on the button just has a good hand, he's not gonna fold cuz. He's rel- relatively short stack too. So if the player on the button just has aces or jacks or ace ten or a set or whatever, they're not gonna fold and we're just getting it in poorly there as well. So, we need to take the prudent line and fold.
Interesting, interesting. Yeah, again, it's a little bit about how you arrange him, um. And I think he's a little wider here than John gives him credit for, especially laggy. I don't think he's got any overpairs personally because I think Jack's plus with a three back, especially laggy.
I misclicked to hit call. So I got, I, I, I don't know, like, I was just looking at the option and I was thinking and I hit call, so I got two points for that.
What would you have done? What did you mean to do?
For, I mean, I was gonna hit fold. It was just, I was thinking, but I mean, it, it doesn't count. You know, many point, uh.
I'll give you ten points if you misclick.
Uh, cuz I was really in between both and I was thinking like it was next to the fold, but it's, it's fine.
All in was three points. Uh, yeah, I mean, I only slightly disagree. I agree with most of what he said. I agree with no fold equity. I just think it depends on you raising. If you look at the range, like, we're flipping, well, I think a decent amount of it.
But you're not even taking into consideration. You're flipping with that portion of the range. I think we gotta take into consideration. Even the five percent, the ten percent of the ti- not ten percent, may maybe. Five to seven percent of the time, the button wakes up and has the actual overpair, the set, the two pair. The monster combo draw that they opened with and just go with. And then we're absolutely destroyed. So, yeah, we're flipping. Pit, we're potentially flipping versus small blind, but then you add in the extra, the few times that we're dominated by the button on top of that. It makes it, we're just kinda completely fucked.
Yeah, you know how we solve this whole issue? Jam three.
It feels bad, man. But, uh, yeah, I got time for like another one. I was, I was saying fold and it's okay.
I trust him. He wouldn't lie to me. We're like this.
But it's okay. We got another one to make it right. Alright, so. I'm afraid to pick these Jonathan little ones. You're just nailing them. Have we done, have you done five ninety two, a five K? Alright, six, seven of spades and a five K.
Five K, the competition should be slightly better. It's not like.
Yeah, we have to think in terms of the caliber of player that's gonna be in these pots. And probably assume unless given otherwise, no otherwise, that they're probably gonna be more competent overall. So, alright, I'm doing it.
Alright, plan on that.
Here we have seven, six of spades, basing a raise, a minimum raise, early in a five thousand dollar buy-in World Series of Poker Dunks. Should we fold, call, raise to seven thousand or raise to twelve thousand?
Alright, what do you guys think about this one?
I have an interesting theory on this one myself.
Bennett says flat.
Caps is call. What are you guys doing out there?
Man, I'm so tilted from that last misclick. I like hit, I hit call. Never call.
Sinus Joe is calling, Opus is calling. Senior Joe is calling, Opus is calling, Kep is calling. Real is three betting, which size, real? You going seven K or twelve? Rich is going seven K.
Damn, twelve is. It is over four X, and we do like that size sometimes, but um, man, oh man.
Which says he feels like he's bleeding the spot. There's a handful of seven Ks coming in here, and there's a handful of calls. Cloud says call or fold, call's now overtaking the seven Ks.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, it's. He has no information, he didn't let us know anything about these players. I think in a five K, there's gonna typically be tougher players behind that will squeeze a little bit more often. Um, we don't have absolute position here, we i- if we're in a button, I might like. Fliding a little bit more if we have information on these guys. I think I'm leaning more towards a three better folds. I don't know, I mean, fighting occasionally, but. And I I just, I would assume the opponents behind are gonna be better and more capable of squeezing and putting us in tougher spots.
Yeah, I mean, for those guys out there saying, or you know, I I'm, I can half say the argument for raising. Um, we are getting the odds to flats, we need twenty to one to flap these hands.
Yeah, we're getting the right price.
So flattening, I think is cool too. Um, I would. Flap this more over three bet, because I like to play close.
As do I, I just think this one is very close, like, I feel like I can flat. A little bit more nine, ten, things like that, uh. Use my flats for more to top. We we can have a more of a polar rise three bet range here, where we use strong linear and some of these type of hands till late position opens. Cuz I do think we just get squeezed too often versus some good opponents behind, but he didn't say there were good guys behind.
Yeah, we get squeezed, we get squeezed. If we get three bet off this, that suck, if we get four bet off this, that kinda sucks. Like, when I play hands like these, I really wanna. See flops and maneuver post.
So you'd probably prefer to use your weak aces or the aces and kings that don't flat as well to use three bets.
Three bet Queen Jack.
Almost reversed implied odds, but when you're three betting, you're using some blockers as well. And they can still call with worse hands, so. Right, 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 right. Alright, so I believe that stealth out here saying he would three bet, flat, three bet if I have no.
Three bet, I could see merit for three betting, I just think. I don't wanna book the pot. We are in position, so it's not that bad.
Um, I'm gonna go with my chat here, I see three bet, three bet. We have more three bets than flats, Bennett says flat, so. First option fold, second option, three bet, three bet.
Yeah, most of my guys say call.
Alright, we're gonna three bet to seven K. You guys are deciding, let's do it, alright.
Yeah, I'm scared.
To be fair, this is actually a re-raise. When someone opens in front of you, you are not raising, you are re-raising or three betting. It's always important to get your vernacular right, so that everyone's on the same page. Anyway, in this scenario, I think we have two options. We can either call or re-raise to seven thousand. Folding is also okay if you think your opponent is especially tight. But with forty-ish big blind stacks, I'm still okay saying flops with the suited connectors, given this is one of the worst. Suit connectors that is playable, is is on the cusp of playability, therefore, three betting is certainly viable, but. I tend to call, especially in live tournaments where people often just make silly mistakes for no real reason. So, I do decide to call. Now, the button three bets, the eighty five hundred. Everyone folds, back to me. Kinda surprising, given this guy raised, he must've had like ace nine offsuit or something. So now, should we fold, call, re-raise to seventeen thousand, or re-raise to thirty two thousand?
Alright.
How you doing?
It feels bad, man. It's a nine out of ten, though, you know.
That's good, that's not a, that's not really a loss.
No, it was nine points. Best call, best answer was call, and that was ten, so we got one point, so it's, he thought it was very close tonight, and what did I say would happen? You know, it'd be, we would've three bet, he would've folded, and we might've got four bet, but this guy might not have squeezed, cuz this size really sucks. This is a small size.
Totally. I got uh, Klaase fold, Rio says shove and flip, it's our only hope. Uh, Rich says fold, boo, this is what I'm about to be chips here, hundred percent fold. Uh, what are you doing?
Uh, we got one fold out of position, this is the easiest call, one of the easiest calls ever seen. I mean, for this price, we're not really gonna be dominated. Uh, we're not getting reverse implied odds or anything like that. Too often, we can hit some very strong hands, where you gotta call six thousand. And there's sixteen, nine out there, like, the price is good, even though we're at a position, I'm always calling this.
Snap fold.
Really? I mean, look at the price.
We need twenty to one, we ain't getting it.
Twenty to one, so what is that? What do we need? We need a hundred and twenty K. So, we got easy fold, Easter rule says easy fold, fold from Stoli, so damn, I'm I'm an idiot. Looking to play six, seven head up, and we're at a position which really sucks. We're not multi-way.
Yep, and we're out of position. We weren't really playing chips, we called the raise, a men raise, we were getting the right price, that's not a mistake. Definitely not a mistake.
How many big blinds do we have? Forty-four?
I got a lot of folds and a couple of calls. Oh, the couple of calls, the same guy calling, so we have one guy.
I'm a muppet with you on call. I feel you, I don't know, I mean, it feels like it's sm- cuz naturally, I would feel like he would need to use a bigger, a a bigger sizing would be optimal, this feels. Yeah, but I mean, naturally, I'm gonna be this deep. You know, we can be three to three and a half with a single raise, so here I'd be four to four point five, like BBs.
What would you be doing out of position?
Well, I mean. Out of position, what do you mean, if I got?
Like, you're in position here, so your three bet size should be smaller than it would be out of position, you're out of position.
But we're still deep effective, and there's another, there was two players in the pot, so I think I'm gonna be a minimum four.
Okay, I mean, I could see some logic to that, sure.
Yeah, I mean, I just think we're just gonna add another bet in there, so I'd be four to four point five, so when he goes this, I'm just, feels like the pot. Yeah, I mean, god, everybody's making me feel like a muppet. I was like, all well, yeah, this is just a call, and then somebody says, I've seen you play crazy sixes, you're folding, god damn, he's just roasting me.
Kep says we can expect to get stacks, and we defend with his hands, so I don't need to get exactly twenty-one, and the problem is, is like, you're gonna get a seven and a six and go with it, or a six and go with it? The flush draw, I'm talking to Kep here, the flush draw makes sense to go with it there, I guess, but like, we don't need to play a thirty-five big. Pot here, we could just fold two bigs and move on with our lives, about forty-two blinds behind. We call this, and we're like. What, another s- uh, six K down, right? So like. What's the blind? So we get another like four bigs off, like, I don't know, we, I'm still, we're not getting the right price.
Alright, guys, whatever my chat, I'm just going with my chat, so I got one fold. Stealth with me, I'm gonna count myself as a call, not deep enough, three, four, 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 everybody's folding. Both, four folds, ay, ay, yeah.
Why are you still so angry?
I know, me and myself are stubborn as fuck.
Well, this is a situation where I'm gonna call almost every time. I realize we're not getting great implied odds. We are not greeting, getting amazing pot odds, we are out of position, but we are almost certainly pretty live. Because when the player on the button three bets, they're gonna have mostly big cards or big pairs. Obviously, I'm not happy when they have big pairs, but I am very happy when they have big cards, right? If I had a hand like Jack nine suited, I would be way more inclined to fold, which may sound a little bit odd, but then we're gonna be dominated a little bit more often. But with seven, six of spades, we're gonna be live very, very frequently. So, we're gonna put in six thousand here to try to win a twenty-three thousand pot. Is that right? Seventeen? Yeah, twenty-two thousand pot, so already getting, you know, okay odds. And, you know, we have some reasonable check shove opportunities, we have some reasonable check call opportunities on a lot of flops. If it comes to a lot of big cards, we're clearly done with it, but um. We're gonna call. Flop comes, four, three, two, we're gonna be checking every single flop, and now our opponent bets sixty-four hundred. Tiny bet. Should we fold, call, raise to fifteen thousand, six hundred? Or go all in?
This is interesting, I have a lot to say about, not this part, but the part before, wait for six.
God.
So here's my problem.
I'm tilted as hell.
Here's my problem. Well, what did you pick? Fold?
I mean, I just went with my, I went with my crew.
Here's my problem, is that he says that we're not getting great implied odds, we're not really getting a great price.
He didn't say that.
Yes, he did. He said, the reason why he's calling is because we're generally live, or we could, you know, check, call, check, jam a lot of flops.
They had to call a pot of six to make twenty-four, I don't know.
But he said we weren't getting right applaud, he wasn't getting.
Yeah, we're not getting the right, but uh, like, I kinda felt like a hand like this, we're just not dominated. Like, I I would hate to call, I would never call like King Jack off or King Queen off, something like that. These kinda hands. Uh, I think we just have to call when he makes it that size. It's a little bit smaller as well.
Cool, so here we are now with the sixty-four hundred, I'm getting a few answers in here, and one guy said raise fifteen. Uh, kinda like the all-in, but probably gonna call, since Kep, Rio's calling. What else you guys doing out there?
What are you doing, Stealth? I feel like we're gonna be in the same boat, we've worked together a couple times, we know what's up. What up Bennett, what are you doing? We're gonna go down a rabbit hole and call, I guess I'm shoving it in his face, yeah. He says call.
I got two raises. One, two floats, and one all-in, so I'm tied for raises, tied for calls, and one jam. What are you doing?
I mean, we can just easily just check, jam, and run into overpair, right? Uh, I don't feel like we can fold anymore, uh, we come this clo- we come this far, I think we have to. How do we not call? I mean, jamming, stealth is jamming. I'm not raising the fifteen K to fold, yeah, we can't raise the fifteen K to fold.
Raises out for me as well.
But you know what happens here, it just sucks when we call flop, and we turn, let's just say it's the ten of spades. And we, what, lead jam, and then check, and then he jams, and then what, you know? Yeah, cuz when we call, there's just gonna be a pot sized. Yeah, yeah, there's, do we check, jam, semi bluff here with the gut shot in the backdoor flush draw? So many questions. I don't know, man.
And then evaluate turn myself, uh, a lot, I'm gonna call this myself. What's up, Ian? Good to see you, man. I think raising to fifteen is kinda out, so for me, it's call or jam.
Yeah, I think just calling, huh? I'm not raising, uh, let's say.
Kings, queens, jacks, tens, aces, eight, something like that. Bet bigger on the flop? If he had some underpair because he's scared of flushes, straights, and overcards. I felt like this tiny bet feels a little weak, which is uh.
Well, I mean, it 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 just sets up a turn shove. You know, re- pretty easily.
Martin says we have uh, all the sets here, I mean, we do, but like, if this guy's got kings, he's not folding because we have all the sets.
Somebody made a good point, like, we might just call here and get very honest responses from his ace-jack type hands. And then if he checks the turn. Yeah, we have a lot of sets and pairs in our range, so might just call, even even some slow played, uh. Aces and kings, we might just decide to, well, we'd have to overcall, and then overcall again and take a, play it real slow, but. Guess some frequency, we have those kinda hands. We definitely would still have some pairs in our range here, so yeah, I think we have to call.
I do too, so I have one, oh, I think I had more calls.
And then check fold on the turn, Stoli says, Slimfit says call, we call here, hit ace spades on turn, then ru- then what, run it on the turn? I know it's sick, man, it's tough when we turn a flush draw, and then he jams into us with our straight draw, like, then what? You know?
Yeah, I mean, that's the risky take, right? I'm calling, most of my chat is calling.
Yeah, Stealth wants to check jam, pardon me, uh. To do that, but hmm, I'm gonna call.
Ace five is a three bet bluffing range for the villain, so also, yeah, I gotta call, I mean, yeah.
Let's do it.
So, man, this is a tough spot. So, we're getting six to one pot odds, right? Six to one is great, so we know we're about ten to one to peel. A straight, which is pretty good, so we are almost there, if we can get another um. Thirty thou- twenty-five thousand chips in the pot, which is basically almost all the, all the stack, but. If we can get almost all the stack in a decent chunk of the time, or all the stack in sixty percent of the time, that's gonna be break even slash profitable, which I do think will happen a lot of the time. Especially on a five, we can't expect our opponent to have a lot of ace X, which just will not fold. It is worth mentioning that normally, when you have a gut shot with no showdown value, raising is the ideal strategy. Except in scenarios where if you raise. And get jammed on, you're very unhappy, because it's almost break even, which actually is the case here, and also. In scenarios where you lack fold equity, and on five, four, three, any ace has a gut shot and overcards. And a gut shot and overcards often just will not hold, so. I don't really love any of our options in this scenario, but I think we need to call, because it is probably a tiny bit profitable. Whereas the other plays are all probably slightly unprofitable, like, I don't mind a jam if you think ace king will hold to a jam. Ace king should not fold to a jam, by the way, you might think, oh, ace king should fold, it just stays high, but even ace king against pocket nine here is in pretty good shape. So, ace king should not be folding, especially given it beats all the draws, um, and that that is a lot of what the opponent's gonna have, so. Opponents can have a lot of ace, king, ace, queen, ace, jack, and those just should not fold, so if the opponent plays well, I think we need to call here. Looking to see what develops on the turn. We turn a seven. We're gonna check our entire range, and now our opponent jams. Should we fold, or should we call?
Damn.
Alright.
This sucks.
This has gotta be a call, right?
I don't, I literally can't think.
Like.
Two overs and a flush draw? And we're just.
So you're just saying he has no pure buffs? Ace, king, ace, queen, and ace-jack, some diamonds, you don't think he ever has a bluff here?
Sure. I think ace, king, and ace, queen, and ace-jack might go crazy with the overs and the straight.
Yeah, you try to put pressure on some of our small pocket pairs or draws ourselves.
Overs and flush draws, obviously.
I mean, it's really hard to fold this. I don't see how we can.
Folded the damn three bet.
Pre and they're pulled to the four bet. That's why we three back pre and pulled to the four bet.
Timmy says call, kicking, screening, suited probably cards, and he's gonna have, I agree, Rich. Uh, ace, seven of diamonds, I mean, we blocked this show, like, that's just too specific. Um, call, don't like it, what the hell, I'm hating this answer, this Joe, wowzers, Ian says he refuses the answer, he's pleading the fifth. Kep says damn and calling, everybody's calling.
So, I got a fold in mind, I got a psychic, Bink says fold, shit calculate, I'm folding, Slimfit says I'm folding. Stoli says call and cry, Onafeld says, if we fold, I quit poker. Yeah, we still, we got thirty-three behind on a left if we were to fold. This this shows that making marginal plays per flop can make you further, yeah, just leads to tougher.
This is a five K buy, and not the goddamn eleven dollar ten K.
This is the five K. So do you think that leads players to be more capable of having a few more bluffs in their range, or, I mean, does that matter at all?
I don't know. I'm really conflicted, I, everything in my fucking bones is saying fold right now. I'm really conflicted, I, everything in my fucking bones is saying fold right now.
Yeah, he just read.
He three bet pre, set up the perfect jam on the turn, and now here we are, like.
It hurts.
It hurts, and we got top pair shit kicker, like.
With the straight draw, don't forget him.
Sure, 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 backdoor.
Two pair draws.
Sure, and a six, seven's always good, sure. But uh.
This is tough.
Yeah. Uh, everyone's saying call, so I'll go call for the, for the, do it for the stream, but like. Everything in my body is saying fold, and again, I would've folded to the four bet for sure.
We haven't, we haven't finished it up yet, Stealth, um, we haven't finished this hand yet. We're still trying to figure out if we wanna. Yeah, giving everybody a chance to make their opinion. Uh, thank you. Uh, yeah, we're just debating what we think the best option is.
Man, I'm kinda cool with thirty-five bigs behind, I'm, I'm.
Don't you, it comes down to you guys, Phil, I'm, I'm, I'm taking a group vote here, so. We got one fold. No, when, uh, Stealth is calling. Easter is full, top pair, cause we're scared of overpair? No, he's calling. That's two calls, three calls, one fold. Bennett says two fold, so three folds, wow, four folds. Psychic Binks says fold.
Which is, we're almost never good here, but how do we play this hand, hit top pair and then fold, because we weren't shooting for top pair. Top pair sucks. We really would've liked anything but top pair.
Now we're going broke with six, seven, right? And then he still has all the overpair in his range. So chat is here because too weak to play, don't, oh, we're, I'm listening to chat because this is interactive and fun, you know?
That's why we're here, we're here to be interactive in chat. Sixes and I have a study group on Tuesdays and Thursdays, that's where we study to get ourselves better for the most part.
Yeah, this is kinda just interactive, so you guys can see how it works and we all can get better together and learn, you know, we, I want you guys to be. Out there seeing the reason why we're doing, why you're doing what you're doing, because it'll help you get better, and then we'll all get to hear from Jonathan, who's an absolute crusher. So, you know, uh, there's, there's no harm in foul, it's not like. Our scores really mean anything, that's why I don't mind just deferring to what you guys say in some of these spots, and then giving my opinion like we do at the end of every single hand, you know? I mean, personally here, I mean, in a five K, when he takes this line, I kinda would wanna fold. Tear your backer, like, uh, if you, alright investors, you know, I called it off with six, seven, I called a three bet, I called a flop bet, and then called it off, and he had aces. You know, like.
Uh, Martin said WWJD, what would Jonathan middle do?
Um, you know, I mean, in the five K, and I think this guy is just gonna be strong here, and I would just get the feeling he's strong, like. I don't think, I think he has way more value hands and bluffs. I think some guys here would shut it down with ace, queen off. When we call the three bet, call the flop bet, and still have overpairs in our range, so I would think he would be leaning towards a very strong hand. Where we're just gonna need a six, seven, or five to be good, and he has very few bluffs. Like thirty, I, I would feel good about having thirty big blinds still in this tournament, in a five K, and proceed with that, rather than. I just don't think he has a whole lot of bluffs here. I don't think he's turning queen, jack. Or something like that into a bluff anymore, you know, or, or, he doesn't have, notice an aggressive player. I mean, if he has ace, queen of diamonds or something like that, you know, ace, king of diamonds, he does have some of those combos, but he also has a lot of tens plus.
We just got another uh, WW MPD, what would my? Um, yeah, I.
I mean, I, I'm kinda leaning just towards a fold, having this ma- this many chips behind.
And we gotta do this, this is a four bet pot, so think about it from the villain shoes, and you were touching on this. Like, the villain four bats and then C bats, and we're still here. Like, we have, we have all the overpairs as well.
Yeah, I mean, we don't just have flush draws in our range, you know?
We have eights, nines, tens, jacks, sure.
Yeah. Alright, well, we're doing it, boys. Uh, Stealth is gonna. You know, unsub and unfollow the channel and never talk to me again.
Gold star, he gets to put, put on the pedestal, he's right.
Alright, you ready?
I'm voting.
What a nasty scenario this has turned into. So now, we are getting two to one pot odds. Are we good thirty-three percent of the time? Well, assuming all of our outs are live, making the assumption we are behind. We have two sevens, three sixes, and four fives, so that's four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine. So that is about, call it eighteen percent equity. So that's not thirty-three, we need to be getting thirty-three. So the real question is. Are we actually ahead some portion of the time? And I think we probably are. I know that may seem optimistic, but notice there are a lot of diamond draws, and some players will feel inclined to shove hands like. Ace, jack, ace, ten, ace, X suited, that decided to bluff pre-flop. So if your opponent is a reasonably strong aggressive player who is capable of bluffing, I think this is just a call. If your opponent's a nit, well, then easy fold. Even though we got there on the turn, your opponent's just not bluffing all that often. That said, if your opponent is a nit, a lot of nits are somewhat inclined just to jam ace, king here, because they think, oh man, I have ace, king, I. I, I, it's a good pre-flop hand, I'm all in. Obviously, that's not ideal, but that is what many players do, so. The only time you can really fold here is when you're just pretty convinced your opponent just has it, and. Obviously, I'm looking at a replay of this hand, just like you are, and we have no way of knowing if the opponent just has it, so. This is a close spot, but I do think it is probably going to be a call. We do call. Opponent has ace, king, and he gets bailed out on the river. Those are the breaks.
Uh, Cap talked himself into a wrong play? Well, I would argue that seven points isn't necessarily a wrong play. I would just say, and Cap said he talked himself into the wrong play. I would say seven points isn't necessarily a wrong play. Poker's a weird thing where there are just sometimes slightly better options than others, and I would say this is kinda one of those spots.
So he doesn't know he's a reasonably aggressive opponent. Yeah, he didn't have much information on the opponent, and that makes a big difference in this spot to me. You know, is this guy capable of turning ace, king into a jam here? I, I don't know, a lot of guys do or not, but. If he's just got him an ace, king, ace, jack. Plus, and then his overpairs, and then some diamond draws. I guess, he still thinks we have enough equity getting two to one.
Yeah, I mean, I think we all ranged, ranged him exactly where he was at, right?
It just feels gross, right? Yeah, I mean, I just thought there might be a small percentage of times he doesn't. Yeah, I just didn't think a guy, I think, I thought most guys with ace, jack might just find a check back there, but.
You know how you avoid this bad beat?
Yeah, Jonathan can just rebuy, we got an eight hour drive.
Don't call, don't call the fucking four bet.
Yeah, don't call the three bet, yeah, I mean, or just three bet. It was a three bet.
Oh, you're right, it was raising a call.
It was just, yeah, he, cause he just called. I wouldn't call the four, I mean, four bets is the fold. I would personally just three bet, but.
I think that's okay too.
But, yeah, I gotta be down after that one.
I gotta do it too, I got another study group right after this, but I pipped it by one point, homie.
You got me, I got you. Uh, you wanna run that giveaway through your chat?
Nice, nice. Thanks, guys, for tuning in. I appreciate all the follows, all the subs, all the new people, all the people getting out there in the chat. For those of you that didn't, don't be scared. You know, we don't judge, get out here, get involved. Uh, these streams are going on every Saturday. Nine AM Pacific, noon Eastern, me and Six is doing these together, um, using the pokercoaching.com. Content, exclamation point PC in my chat, exclamation point PC in Six's chat for a link. If you would like to go there and get a bunch of free content, you can get twenty free quizzes and a bunch of homeworks. Uh, and then if you wanna sign up for the premium stuff, or the platinum stuff, there's a forty dollar option, a hundred dollar option. You can do that as well and get up to six hundred quizzes and webinars and homeworks and rewards and. Stuff. So get in my chat, get in Six's chat, get in there and do that stuff.
Yeah, thank you guys for joining, and you guys always make it fun. Don't, yeah, feel free to always get out there and uh. Give your opinion, even if you think it may be wrong, or, you know, something like that, and. You know, it helps us all get better, so, uh, yeah, good job today, everyone, and, yeah, you can get all this shit for free, exclamation point PC. Go to the site, check it out, uh, sign up for a free account, webinars, there's a lot of great content. Uh, me and Toe personally use it all the time, these, there's charts. Yeah, there's charts, man, it's, it's, it's just sick, man. I think there's a lot of value, um, to the site. And, you know, I would say everybody check it out, but thank you guys again, we'll be back next week at the same time, and uh, yeah, take care, guys.
Wait, wait, three really quick things. One, forgot to mention that both Sixes and I have quizzes on this side too, if you wanna go in there and sign up. And take our quizzes, do that, and there's gonna be eight or so total right now that we already have in the can, so there's more coming, take our quizzes. Two, I record these and put them up on the YouTube channel, so if you missed out, you wanna check it out, go to the YouTube channel, check that out as well. Like, subscribe, comment. I'll get back to you. If Sixes doesn't see it, I'll make sure he sees it, and I'll get back to you. Um, so yeah, do all that as well, and the third thing is, is, we wanna throw the host to, buddy?
Uh, I think I'm gonna throw it to Sevzar, man, he's been a good dude. I see he's, yeah, I see he's out in the street, so everybody go drop. Some Crazy for Goods and some guys, Big Toe Emotes in his chat, show some love, and thanks again, guys. Take care. Thank you, Easter, have a good one, buddy. See you, bud.
Um, for the tier two and tier three subby study group, guys, uh, we have our study group going right after this. I will call you on Skype, so uh, tune in for that. Let's do a five minute little bio break, use the bathroom, get a drink, and we'll head over to there. Thanks for everything, guys. Thank you for the follow, Bennett, Joe Ryan. Um, and uh, we'll see you again tomorrow. Tomorrow, big Sunday, going on the big grind, going after the big money. We're on a heater, guys. We have five sessions and five podiums, and so, uh, yeah, there we go. Throwing the host over to Sevzar, giving some love. I'll see you, guys, later, peace.